Welcome to the October 18, 2022 meeting of the Village of Ryman Hollywood. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing for 57 Chestnut Street for proposed in-ground pool. They have a motion to open the public hearing. Close. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do you have an applicant like a presentation? You can step up over this microphone. Oh, there it's gone.
On the air or?
Yeah.
Or you want to stand with you?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Here's a couple of last seconds for you guys. So you don't have to twist your necks. All right, in-ground pool. Good night. Testing, testing, testing. I'm Stephen, DJ pool specialist, good night pool installer. We are proposing a good night pool at the Walker residence at 57 Chestnut in the village. I, yeah, it's a pool, 14 by 37 foot six, small modest pool to cool off and enjoy in the summertime. We've, I believe we've met all requirements as far as setbacks and we have a new engineer page to depict the existing septic and the future expansion area to show that we're conforming. That's the last page in the package I provided you. We've also provided a site plan with our proposed actions as well as some details of those actions with the pool construction and the landscaping that's going to be happening around it as well as the fence. Our goal is to be as non-basement as possible, which is a very achievable goal. My clients have spoken to all their neighbors who have given their blessing to execute the project, assuming that we are granted the opportunity.
Do we have any members of the public here today wishing to speak about 57 Chestnut Street? Okay. Huh? Closed twice, closed three times. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing for 57 Chestnut Street? I'll make the motion close. Do we have a second?
Second, Jeff.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, comments from the board?
Only thing that they're, I'm not aware of is.
What's the fifth page, this one here of all these? So we have two pages of those little red dots. It's shown on the right-hand side of the drawing title. We have the one being the existing topography and the other being the proposed following the action of the pool installation. So it's just to show that we're not making significant changes. So if there's considerations or questions about drainage and things like that, we're not looking to imposing any, we're not going to increase the runoff towards neighboring properties. We're kind of sticking to what we are already dealing with, especially with the planters.
You said there was going to be a fence. Is that a new fence? And what does it look like? What is that fence?
The fence is a, there's a six-foot fence. I believe it's already up.
Oh, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, the fence is already being constructed. But it meets all town criteria. It's real wood.
Wood?
Yeah.
Nice looking fence. And a big tree over behind the parking lot and that could be a problem for you.
Correct. And you'll see on the first page that they are putting in some hedges around the pool in between the fence, property line and the pool. You can show, the front page shows the fence line as the red dotted line that kind of cuts through, you know, three-quarters of the hedge up the page. So we're keeping the fence off the property line, or it is off the property line. So there is a pretty good buffer there for noise and things like that and for the screen.
And when you say hedge, what sort of compliance are you talking about? How high?
I imagine we'd be hitting about any, like an eight to 12-foot maintained hedge just a peak above the fence, you know?
Okay.
I'm more of a concrete guy than a green thumb.
Just so we have a sense that it's not a.
Right.
You know, something that's going to.
California woods.
The existing fence is, what, six feet?
Correct.
Is, in your submission, there's this drawing, is this existing fence as well as close up to the pool or?
Well, that's a detail that's between the garage and the main house to show the entry gate that's coming through there. It's more of an engineering or a code compliant type of section so that their, the package kind of encompasses going from here to the building apartment.
And this is in place today or this is to be constructed?
That is to be constructed, that small fence between the garage and the house. We aren't going to build that until the approval because it's for the pool.
And that looks the same as the perimeter property fence that's there today?
I think it's going to be shorter, actually.
I imagine that since it's not bordering the property line, it'll be probably about four foot to 54 inches to comply with New York State Code, either the same material but of a smaller scale. But it will conform with the bill code.
Could you just clarify, there's a couple of different references to the size of the pool, but I would assume your site plan is the most accurate where you show 16 by 34 interior dimensions, is that the?
Right, so because of the size of the patio, trying to keep things, you know, one size throughout this whole process, so what my plan is showing right there was the original interior water dimensions, okay? And what we're showing on today's plan is the outside of the coping, so, and we're depicting the coping as 24 inches. So when we're showing a 37 six for outside coping, outside of coping, we take four feet off of that and that's our actual length of the pool that we're doing. So that's why you're seeing discrepancy. So the 20 feet actually is 16 feet. So we kind of like move things around to accommodate the space to best fit, especially once we brought in the expansion area of the septic, we want to make sure that we are complying.
So, but interior dimension is correct as written on the plan, 16 by 34, and then it's plus four feet inch direction, is that 12 feet?
Correct, within six inches, right.
So we, this plan is the most accurate?
The pool equipment area is shown inside the garage at eight by 12?
Correct.
And the pool heater is listed as propane?
Correct.
And those tanks are, that's going to use for fuel, the existing tanks on the property?
Existing tanks on the property or new tanks on the, I'm not sure orientation on the plan right now, but the side of the garage towards the septic system. We would find a way to hide two 150 ground above ground tanks that would be out of sight, out on the side of the road or anything like that.
So the two tank, there's two there today and you possibly would be?
No, there's not two there today. If we required more propane on the site, it would be that. And if we were going to bury a tank that was determined as the best solution, we would draw up a plan for that and have it submitted so everybody knows what we're doing and so we can conform.
So we'd go with information for that?
Right, right, yeah. We give all information to Ryan, so that it can apply. But right now we're just trying to get through point A to get to point B.
Then did you give us a lot coverage percentage?
A lot coverage percentage? No, that wasn't, I do not believe you have a lot coverage percentage. I don't know that I had that, that was from our last meeting.
You can probably figure it out.
I'm sure that doesn't mean thirty, look at this. It's pretty big.
Yeah, it's pretty big.
The patio will be installed as too, so.
I don't think you're going to have a problem.
No, it looks like it's way below thirty.
Okay. Any more questions from the board?
We want to put a condition on any approval, it would be that propane tanks, since they're sort of vague at this point, probably wouldn't be visible from the street.
Okay.
Or next to the property line.
Right, maybe a tent from the property line.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve with that condition.
Hold on, John, we need to do lead agency and negative.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to do that the last time. We have a motion. And then negative.
He says we have to do lead agency.
For pool? For pool and historic history. We have a motion to declare the Ryman Village Planning Board as lead agency.
Motion.
I'll second that. All those in favor? I have a motion for the negative.
I'll make the motion for negative declaration.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now you're telling us.
It's all, you know, for additional propane, negative back, if you want from the street or what you can be.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I was daring to say. You got a little, we got a few questions. Say, someone repeat, okay? For your part of the board. Okay, second item, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Second item is a lot line adjustment for 4248 South. This is a public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
We have a motion to open the public hearing. We want to open the public hearing.
Second, Jeff.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have that plan checked or are you looking?
Well, I think you used this one, it's the same one from the last time, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's why I didn't.
Good evening, Ernie Martin, professional engineer in Lansing, representing Mr. and Mrs. Hassanmark at 42 South Street and Joseph Doyle at 48 South Street. Both Mr. Hassanmark and Mr. Doyle are in the audience this evening. This application, simply what we're doing, we're moving a lot line. The Hassanmark property is about four tenths of an acre. The Doyle property is about 1.6 acres. We're looking to take the common, the existing property line, as it exists right now between the two parcels, move it about 90 feet in an easterly direction that will result in both properties being approximately one acre. We have two lots right now and we're going to end at two lots. We're not creating any more lots.
Anybody in the public here for 4248 South Street? Comments?
Did we open the public hearing?
Yes, we did. Opened and seconded and you were, speak louder.
That's right.
Well, if we have no comments, we can have a motion to close the public hearing.
Close.
Second.
Second, Darren. Second, Darren, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, questions from the board?
Just one comment, we reviewed the plan at the last meeting and just to reiterate, it was confirmed at the last meeting that the movement of the lot line will not put the septic system of the other property out of compliance. It's not, it's not near it. Just wanted to confirm that for the record.
Yes. We physically, before we made the application, we physically uncovered the septic tank and relied well on the Doyle property. He had a pretty good idea where it was and we confirmed where it is, as shown, as stated on the plan.
Just wanted that for the record.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion to approve the lot line adjustment, 4248 South Street.
I'll motion, Jeff.
Second? I'll second that one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Okay, thank you. Once I get my L R and get all the signatures coordinated with Ryan.
Yeah, I have to come and sign it. Okay, good.
And good luck with Yomi Cop and you.
Check with Ryan.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a renovations of 14 South Street, which is in the historic section.
Hey, I'm already with the first, we got the high technology version.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
So, this is for the public, we don't have. This is a application to do some renovations and modest additions to 14 South Street. It's on the south side of South Street, not quite a big way between Rudinai and Center Street. It's a yellow house, on three and eight years by John Honey and his wife Mary Honey, currently owned by Elijah Bender. The proposal is to modestly raise the roof above the garage to allow the second floor, usable second floor space there and to rebuild the recently constructed west wing, which was rather lightly constructed by the previous owner of Pierce, to give it a full foundation and to put a second floor above it as well. At the end of it, we're going to have, right now it's a three-bedroom house on the second floor, we will still have three bedrooms, but they'll be larger bedrooms with, once we have our deposits. And not really a significant change to the footprint, it's just a, the west wing, it's a little deeper, the garage side is not getting any larger on the ground floor, and we're rebuilding the deck in the back and adding a porch above. But from South Street, it will look very much similar to the way it is right now. And that's really pretty much the gist of the plan. At the last Planning Board meeting, the Planning Board requested a note be added to the site plan that the sidewalk continue across the driveway, and we've added that note to the site plan. So those are used from the lake side and you have a view there from my section. Motion. We have a motion to open the public hearing. I'll make that motion. Second?
Second, Jeff.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone here for public hearing on 14 South Street? Once or twice?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing. John?
Yep.
Second, Darren. Second, Darren, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ernie. So, comments from the board about the plan?
The materials?
The materials, bring out a wood platform that will remain that.
And the deck?
The deck is open.
Deck. That's a big deck. I said, it's not much of an impact from the.
Big deck on the lake.
But from the lake side, it's a big impact, there's two big double deckers.
Yeah, there is currently a one-story covered porch in the back of the center of the house. And we're putting a second story on that because there is a space above it, a sitting room, but it doesn't have any access to the, to the area room. And then we're putting, there is a small deck on the western addition as well, but it's just a one-story deck. And we might as well, because that's going to be a bed in there, we might as well cover that as well and then have a deck. So yes, from the waterfront, if you will, it's that sort of waterfront.
It's set back pretty far from the waterfront, right?
It's pretty far back, but yes, there is adding more.
So it'll reduce the scale of it. But I think the impacts would be more from the, from the lake than from the street.
I think you mentioned last time, Warren, how far, what's the depth? How far back is the rear of the house from the waterline?
We have eighty-seven feet, the closest point, from the porch slash deck to the water.
It's a deep one.
Is it deep? Although not the heaviest of ones.
Oh, no, the Pritons have a lot that runs a mile to the kill. It's a long, this is a short one, but still, they have the view of the lake, which is wonderful for all those lucky people on South Street. Any other questions in the board? We're moving right along. A motion to approve the modifications to 14 South Street.
Sorry, just one, can you reiterate the style of the windows?
Right now the windows are sort of a mix of styles from different generations of the house. And so the earliest windows were two over two, which were sort of, I think it was when it was built in the mid-19th century, it was really sort of Gothic Revival, but then most of that has disappeared. And so a lot of the septic windows are more colonial style, you know, with divided muntens to six or six or some combination thereof. And we're sort of keeping that somewhat of like the minister where you can see it from the street or from the neighbors because that's characteristic of that house, it's evolved over time. On the backside facing the lake, the French doors are, don't have muntens, just, you know, to make a clear view, but we're really working in the style that it has evolved into over the course of 150, 170 years and multiple owners, which is more colonial revival now than anything else.
Are the shutters real or are they?
Well, may not be wood.
No, I'm not saying they have to be, but they're properly sized for the window.
Yes, they're wood.
Okay. I don't have a problem.
Yeah, they're not true and I think. Any other comments?
You mentioned everything last time, that the faux front door, the second front door is going to remain on the front of the house.
Yes, it's always been there with shutter, because there's several other houses along there that have same look. And that's one of the original sort of hyperfeatures, so it's kind of nice to keep that.
Yeah, I'm much appreciated because when you walk down the street, there's actually, I think, four or five of the, that same.
I think, I think there are four houses roughly in the same plant and they blow up a loft somewhere differently, but.
They've all changed.
Yeah, and there are others in the village too, as you know, that have other front doors.
They're originally two family.
Some of them, I don't know that this ever was, but certainly some of them were.
Why did it put even more?
For symmetry.
There's no two stairways in it?
No, no, I mean, not now, it's a very generous stairway that goes up to the left of the front door, which is why there's that earlier addition with that, with that there, which is pretty nice, but I suspect originally it could have had, like, it probably should have had some really tiny stairways that are kind of.
Side by side.
Yeah. The original doors to his garage are at my house now. We took them off when I first walked here and I had them out on the street, so I'll take them for my own. To this, right? Yep. Now that was a while ago, right? Yeah. Forty years ago. Okay, corporate motion? Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck. Thank you. Okay, continued business. Fifty-five Livingston Street, hiding in the minisplits.
We need to, we're drawing one of the owners.
We have our plan and some people.
You see, plans, I thought of soft ones. I never saw plans, I saw.
Sort of a letter, but these pictures were sent out to, no, that's, oh, that's approved by South Street, right?
That's what he said to me.
And so why did you explain the plans? We have a photo batch.
Sure, sure.
Why didn't you?
Yes, so we, as Gabriel's letter indicates, we hired her to have designed the garden and it, by all accounts, I think it came out pretty good. And we asked her to have her input because this is proximate to the, I guess, the east end of that garden to see what she thought. And she gave her two cents in her letter suggesting that, we weren't here for the request, that the request was of an evergreen or a more solid lattice that would provide a kind of a solid looking screen. And we had a couple thoughts on our own and one of which was, you don't want to put it too close to the splits themselves if they regard to air circulation. We also see just above that first basement window is your fill port, the oil tank, which is still down there. We, this is not our, the minisplits aren't the sole source of heat, there's an oil burner that you may think that at some point, we're not ready to cut that cord yet. So we need to get the oil filled from the street, you know, the holes from the street in there. So those are my physical issues with the more significant blockage thing. So she suggested if you see the, that's a clematis vine that goes up the side of the porch, it's been there three or four years, it doesn't, it doesn't get cut back in the winter. So it just turns brown and stays there, we cut it back in the spring. So her notion was to extend the edge of the garden that is, those are columbine, I think, but it's, you know, pull that a little bit toward the Austin's house on the east side to round it out so it doesn't look too, you know, artificial. And then, you know, put in an additional lattice, I don't know if we can get the same thing we got that at the, at the used store of the street. It's wrought iron and it's, you know, that one's anchored to the porch. We could go up to something of a similar style that would be consistent with what's on the end of the porch and support a similar clematis. So we would bring it up, you know, you see that's probably 15 feet tall. I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest we had to put a 15-foot lattice, but if we put it up six or eight feet, it would easily grow that high and stay that high. It's not quite as sunny up where you want the screening to be, but the Austin's, that tree loses its leaves pretty fast and if they lose its branches and trunk in a little while too, because it's not an apple tree. So we, I project more sunshine in that corner, so I think that volume would do very nicely and I think it would address the concerns and wouldn't trouble us.
When I read the letter, what I got was that they were going to put a four-foot wire lattice fence, you know, open fence that the plankets climb up on, and then it was going to have an angular four-foot fence that went back more towards the backyard. That's how it was, what I read.
That was my interpretation too.
Which I think would be if it was five or six feet high and had evergreen clematis on it. Apparently, I don't know much about the class, we have some and ours drops all its leaves and everything, but apparently there's evergreen versions and deciduous versions. And so if you get an evergreen version, it would, it'd run screening.
That's what, we would stick with that, it's been very successful.
But if you're going to put an eight-foot extension off that, I would think you would at least need at least one more plant rather than relying on the one that's already there.
Sure, thank you. The goal would be to have a plant, not dying to have the same one. Naked left, name, but.
Okay.
It's part of what we want to avoid.
But is my assumption that you're talking about a four-foot parallel to the porch and then a four-foot angular towards the back?
Well, yeah, four feet parallel to the street and then.
Angle back.
Yeah, I would say not a right angle, kind of a.
Oblique angle.
135 degrees or something like that to make it open. So again, we want to not make it look weird. We have the garden that we spent a lot of time on, it's funny, and she, she made it. We do the work, but she set it up so it's always blooming and she's, she's pretty good. So we don't want to mess that up and that was our original reaction. Setting aside my suggestion that this isn't a significant improvement or major exterior additions and modifications, which, that was my real reaction when I, when we got the note.
We can disagree about that. I could, I can agree with your solution as long as it's an evergreen and it's at least five feet high. Because I think those units were mounted like pretty low and up to about six feet.
Yeah, at most, yeah. I, they're not over my head.
Has the house been recently painted?
Yes.
Do you have any blue paint left? So, I mean, the white stripes going up the side of the building would be hidden a little bit if they were.
It's a babe, but I have no problem painting the side, yeah.
I mean, you know, at least it would minimize, you know, all those things going up the side of the building. If you have some blue paint left.
Yeah, as far as timing goes, it's all going to wait for the spring, but yeah.
That'd be great, that would help.
I tried forever to get Central Hudson to come back, to, to come, to disconnect, you're looking at it, it drives me crazy, that there's a piece of aluminum siding that is still behind the meter box, but the, you know, the, my payers weren't gonna tinker with the meter.
Right.
And, and I had service called in for a year, and, and so, I can still see the aluminum siding that was there, in case anyone wants to be reminded what it looked like before.
I think this is a good compromise, anybody else on the board have any questions or comments? I, I would say this property's been vastly improved from where they bought it. The garden looks good, the old siding removed, and, you know, the non-lead siding is there. The garage, studio looks nice, everything has been done, and it's, it's a much better improvement of what was there before you were there. What is, what, John, I disagree with, um, the comment that this was not a major impact on the outside. I believe it is, and we have, and we've been on that, and I would say your contractor on this probably dropped the ball, he should have gotten a permit and had our input, and, you know, I'm sure we probably could have come up with something better than it being done now, but I'm fine with this.
I didn't disagree with that, I think it's a major.
Yeah, many splits are one of the major prob, dangers to the historic district right now. We had that house on South Street with eight, one for each room in the house. All of a sudden, eight many splits in front of the house, and now they're trying to hide it, and. Sixty-six South Street did the best job of camouflage, you barely noticed it, you know, they have it on the house.
While, while we're here, and I don't know that it's shown in either of these photos, we're looking at the other one, but, um, the gas, the gas tank is, maybe, you have to go at the very edge of that photo, maybe it's on one of the ones.
Can I play the curse again?
This is the oil fill event? That's the oil fill event, if you go to the very edge of the, to the right, edge of the, edge of the picture, you see that open spot? That's the corner of the house, okay? It goes about six or eight feet into the house, and then the, the back porch continues. There's a, the last unit is back there, which you can't see from anywhere in the street. The, in, in, in that corner, where it goes back with this and like this, is the, is the propane tank. So, it's not visible from the street, it's there. It turns out, I mean, the, the record I measured it, it's too close to the many splits, so it needs to be ten feet, six feet. So, the solution, should the guys coming up look at it on the twenty-fourth, is gonna be to put it on a pad, and you can get the extra four feet that way. Again, it doesn't affect the street, which I'm assuming the planning board is concerned, it's in the back, it's not, you know, it'll be, it'll be hidden by the same trellis, but I didn't want you to see something happen in the building apartment if you look back, for the, you know, it's not what we thought it was, but, again, it's not, it's not part of this concern.
Well, the tanks with the new many split in the back is not gonna be visible from the street.
Correct, yeah, it's around that corner, you know.
Yeah.
Which is a, you know, it jobs in and then will affect another twelve feet.
Well, that's where we'd like to see all these things, but I know it's tough to configure sometimes.
Right.
That picture.
I don't know if that's, if you can see it from there. That shows one in the rear, I can't see it.
It shows one in the rear, you can't see the tank, I don't think.
I don't see the tank. Tank's stuck in the corner.
No, that, I think the fence will cover all this, it's, it's really the needed view from the street and the sidewalk that we wanna protect. So that the houses don't look like that. And that's sort of, how to describe it, it's a new problem for us.
Yeah.
We had a, uh, an older big team was renovating someone's house, two family, renovating the garage on the right side of the entrance, renovating the bathroom, in the, in the section on the left side of the entrance, who said, look, you could put many splits on the side, you're gonna pipes through the garage, you're gonna pipes through the bathroom, be creative, you know, and not put many splits on the front of the building. So, she went away, and she had just seen us going over some other many split problem at that meeting, and said, I understand, I got it. I'll be back with my plans, so, we're trying to get the word out, please consult us and, you know, be, be creative.
So, should we ask for a, an actual drawing of where this thing will be for the files? Rather than just a verbal description? And I'm willing to approve it tonight, just on the verbal description, but for the files, it seems to be, we should have something that's consistent, so, six months from now or a year from now, we, we would be able to document what was approved.
Before we get into that, Mr. Chair, we just need to do the neg there for this.
Okay, we have a motion for the neg there.
I'll make a motion for neg there.
Second.
John, second for both in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, are we ready? Okay, we have a motion to approve, uh, the HVAC many split, uh, protection.
Screaming.
Screaming, um, fifty-five Livingston Street.
And I think we don't have to describe it in the motions, that's, um, we don't have a drawing yet. It'll be a four foot wire fence, um, parallel to the street.
I wouldn't use a brick wire fence, I think that's a chicken wire fence, it's gonna be, you know, an, an, an open style, um, I don't know what the price should be, but.
Trellis.
Open, open style trellis, yeah.
Okay, open style trellis, uh, at least five feet high, parallel to the street, for four feet, and then four feet angled towards the backyard. And that, uh, the second condition is that, is that the applicant do a sketch plan showing that with the dimensions on it, so that, um, we have something to verify this.
A third condition, that the line height decreased, or?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, and then, I'm sorry, the fourth condition is that, um, the clematis it's put in is evergreen. So, it'll be provide screening during the winter.
Miranda, did you get that all, good? It's good to have you here.
Any problems with that?
No. Ready for a motion? Well, we did, we did the motion, we're adding this four conditions.
Yeah, I can't remember what.
Okay, we approve it?
No.
Okay.
In a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, you have seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Good luck, thanks for coming in.
Thank you for trying to help with this problem. Next item is eight, ten Chestnut Street, both site plan to convert a two-family residence to a single-family residence.
Evening. This is Mametown, seeing you guys, the owner, applicant. So, at the last meeting, the planning board, you may recall, we're discussing a possible need for three variances in the planning board. Rear yard, side yard, and a, uh, area variance for the side and accessory apartment, the apartment is a little right. The board asked us to restore the options to reduce the number of variances we needed. I met with, uh, Jenny off to Justin Voice, we discussed, um, how to calculate square footage of the accessory apartment, what was, you know, considered part of the square footage as opposed to habitable area. We made a minor change in the closet layout and so forth, and didn't count the areas that are under the eaves that are inaccessible, which is perfectly reasonable, um, so we ended up not needing the variance for the second floor apartment. Seven hundred and thirty-three square feet versus seven fifty, we use that, well, that could happen to that one. We also moved the proposed garage forward two feet, north two feet, so we don't need a rear yard variance. So, we're needing a ten-foot condition there. The third thing we did is originally there was a plan for a six-bedroom septic system. By reducing it to a five-bedroom septic system, we're obviously able to reduce the side of the leaf field, and we were able to pull the proposed garage off the western property down, we were, there's a little jog, um, to five foot. So, we're still need one five-foot side yard variance from the zoning board, but that's the only variance we've needed, so we'll be looking for recommendations from the planning board to the zoning board. And if we get that variance, we'll be back for, um, try and find an accessory permit approval since we're proposing accessory apartment. I also know from a discussion with Brian and Justin Voice, um, we're gonna have to fill out a demolition application for the existing garage and shed, both of which according to the property records are roughly nineteen forties. Were not considered historic when the district was documented in nineteen seventy-nine, the time has marched on, and suddenly they pull under that seventy-five-year-old window and attach it to their historic house. So, we'll prepare an application to, um, remove those two structures, um, which you can consider maybe referred to state historic preservation, you'll let me, you know, I'll be here to handle that. But, um, we're not destroying the house, number one, you can do all of the house, we wanna renovate it, remove the, uh, excessive composition siding, renovate the interior, minus expansion of the back, to basically bring it back to its original glory, plus a little more, um, and then replace a sort of not very significant garage in the back architecturally or in terms of construction with a, uh, a newer carriage house style garage, it'll be more useful to the owner than the current building. The shed in the back really is in poor shape, doesn't have any utility to the owner, and can't stay there because of the septic system, even with the reduced size of it, um, so, uh, but that, that's the will we return to you, assuming we get through the zoning process with the zoning board. So, again, my understanding is that I, before I go, I'm looking at requesting a break in data to the zoning board for the one requested side yard variance on the left side.
Right, this will be at the November meeting?
Yes, at the November seventeenth meeting.
So, the existing garage is not encroaching, it's got a little, like, little jog inside.
It's like a one foot off the jog, probably.
So, it's not encroaching.
The jog, the jog's around the garage.
Yes.
I think it's good that you eliminated two of the three variances, that's a positive. We always ask people to try to minimize variances, not just for us, but for the zoning board of appealers. And I think that could be, if we approved this, that one of the findings would be that the applicant worked to remove the three variances down to one, and that would be a, you know, quick settlement point. So, questions in the boardroom?
Is it still a three-car garage?
It's still a three-car garage.
And the pad will be bigger than what's shown there in front?
The pad.
The asphalt drive is getting into the three-car garage.
Removing the driveway.
Oh, I see.
From right now, it's harder again to have, we're moving closer to the west.
I see, okay, I didn't pick up the purple log.
Yeah, so there is backup space.
I agree. And that will take down any trees?
No.
Grass to retain all the good ant trees. I think we have to move this, a small tree.
There's a, there's a small maple tree that is, uh, kind of between the, the house and the property line there, where it says proposed day of drive, um, that tree we're planning to elsewhere on the property.
Isn't there sort of a big one along the street there?
There's a big walnut tree right at the street, but we, we believe we have clearance, um, between that tree and the property line more than enough to do a new driveway.
The original, uh, when you first came, the second floor of the three-car garage, I think it was nine hundred and fifty feet?
I was using the gross area, kept it just the entire perimeter, and.
In other words.
So, you also determined that habitable, net usable habitable space was a more appropriate determination.
So, that was the, basically, that was the footprint of the three-car garage?
Pretty much.
Pretty much the slab.
Pretty much, right.
But the second floor follows the same footprint, how, how did you get from?
Well, there, there are low eaves, so there's a gable facing the street, or, I don't know if you have the drawings from the previous division. There's a gable facing the street, um, and there, there are eaves that come down on the side of that as well as on the side of the shed over in the back. And when you're calculating the, um, the net usable square feet, you don't typically count the stairs twice, you count it on one floor.
Right.
So, so, once we took out those areas, inaccessible areas, and areas where you can't stand, kind of usable square feet, that got counted as a seven thirty-three.
But you had mentioned you actually modified the floor plan slightly.
I've made, made a lot, probably a lot of higher adjustments, right, exactly, so.
Proactively.
We'll get to see all that later, and if you come back.
Yeah, I think I did, I don't know, I think I sent that to, to Miranda, that would be certainly a subject for discussion when we come back.
So, the process for this would be first get the variances?
Yes.
And then go back for the demolition on the two buildings?
Well, also, site plan, site of permanent.
Probably, yeah, but that would be the next thing, is the demolition, and then the other thing would be just like.
Well, demolition could, like, you currently depend on the, the.
Right. And then you need a special permit for the.
For the eight, yes, accessory building.
So, is the accessory apartment gonna be rented out, or is it gonna be a guest house, or is it gonna be an Airbnb, or is it?
No, 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 um, I, I have not determined yet if I'm going to rent it, if I was going to rent it, it would be like being generally rental to, to a resident, would not be a big financial hassle.
Okay.
So, you said the original plan we saw, the, the, the septic system was for six bedrooms, because you had a plan two in the accessory dwelling.
Yeah, we were only showing four bedrooms in the house and one bedroom in the second unit, but Samantha thought having a six-bedroom septic system would give her flexibility, should she ever wanna convert downstairs in a house, a bedroom or something, but it just doesn't fit with everything else on the lot, so, because we have to have a reserve area as well.
Right, so, so the area here, and we're showing now, this, this twenty foot setback. Is that their, is that the counter requirement, twenty feet?
Yes, it is, that's helpful. It's ten feet to a septic tank and another ten feet to your leach field or.
But it's, but, but the requirement is twenty feet from the leach field to a structure?
Do it habitable structure, yeah.
And that's, so that's why, that's why this structure is still five feet from the one.
That's correct, that's correct.
So, you don't have an option of just moving it in a few feet?
No, I mean, it's five feet, at the closest point, there's still that jog in the carpet.
At the jog, I believe it's a little over ninety.
That's all, that jog is four feet.
Yeah, it's, I went out and measured it because, um, my parents own the property, I saw it.
Well, these the fences, I'm not, I mean, this is based on a survey, obviously, and it definitely doesn't.
Yeah, 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 I mean, if this is five feet, I mean, now that, that's four feet.
Yeah, at the rear part.
Four feet from the fence is what it looked like to me from the road. And you can see the fence line there is over to the property line, so that's what the deception is.
And your, and your plan is still to have the entrance over here, near the lot?
The side entrance to the second floor, yes.
Okay, and that side entrance, if I recall, had a canopy, but the canopy doesn't extend any more than the requested variance.
No, that's correct, the, the.
And we don't count, we don't.
Still cover us with that.
Yeah, and we don't count canopies.
It doesn't have posts, but.
Yeah, I think it's only counts if it's attached to the.
Yeah, there are references in side yards, it don't apply to front rear yards.
And you feel you have enough space for somebody to get in and out of there, in that old alley here.
Yeah.
And will it be a fence still on that corner?
Uh, the corner behind the garage?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, so currently, um, the wood fence from six Chestnut runs all the way back to that corner.
Yeah.
But the rear fence is, uh, some old core shaped chain link that we're planning to replace with all wood.
And that wood will, provides sort of privacy for the person who's taking that to that entrance, so the neighbors.
Yes.
The wood.
All right.
So, we need a positive or negative recommendation, and our findings to send to the zoning board of appeals. So, first, could someone give me a negative or positive recommendation for eight, ten Chestnut Street?
I'll make a motion for a positive recommendation.
That was a second.
Second, that's fair.
And our findings are, let's spell it out, the, the zoning board, the first thing is, they've gone from three variances down to one variance, try to make it, you know, lesser two street.
Right, because they, because they've reduced the allowable septic on the property from six bedrooms to five bedrooms. And therefore, were able to overcome. And be able to move this forward, and still be twenty foot setback.
And that, uh, placement of the garage is the minimum that could be shifted because of the distance requirement for the septic system?
Yes. Satisfy this, the twenty foot.
Right, and it is less encroaching than the existing garage, so actually, the, the distance back from the property line is increasing from existing conditions.
Reducing, in all form. Including the shed too, the shed is currently encroaching, it wouldn't be there to encroach anymore.
That was a lot, did you, did you catch that, Miranda?
Yeah. Yeah.
So you, you make recommendations for positive recommendation, motion, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll see you back at some point. Now, the, the next item, we have to make an executive decision. Tri meets deli is gone, Woodstock meets a deli is moving in. Now, the code is made on whether a, a public hearing or a special permit is required for change like this. Here's why, to check with our, our attorney, I asked the attorney to look at the open stuff, I looked at the code, they also feel it's kind of vague, and a lead-in now to the board, to us to make the decision whether or not we feel the meet-to-meet requires a special permit.
Yeah, I would take it, that's not our call, but you know, the zoning enforcement officer didn't want to make.
It was too vague in our, in our section for special use permit. I do have something that I can share with the chair and the rest of the board from the planning zoning attorney Emily Svensson that sort of weighs in on this a little bit. She says, or identifies that because it's a proprietor that still will operate as a deli and meat market, that unless items change such as hours of operation or, or other items that were provided in prime's approval, that if any of those change, that it potentially might need to come back. But she doesn't feel that the Woodstock meats would have to file a new special use permit.
Good enough for me. I, it seems we, if it's, if it's vague and three people look at it, they can't really make a determination, then we sort of have to side with the applicant on this, because it's not clear that it's required.
So then we're just here to approve the signed application?
Correct.
For Woodstock meats, we got the sign?
You do.
Are you what?
Here I am.
Oh, you are.
Well, how are you doing? For the Yankees, for the record, the Yankees won.
Oh, I was worried.
Those were four, I get a blow.
The Yankees.
I looked, I should have looked at my phone.
Is it over, is it the one, or they move it for the next?
Yeah, five one.
Five.
Excellent.
What's up for the record, your name, sir?
Oh, Paul Bygert, president of Timely Signs, representing Sam Ipoche, the owner of Woodstock Meats, and Keith Reichel is here as well. If you need any questions regarding the business model, business plan, anything that I can not answer with regard to that particular tenant.
Do we have the sign? Is it the same size as the, as the prime sign?
It is, it's for the same size.
No lighting, or for the light?
No lighting.
No lighting?
The previous was not lit, and what will this one be? It's hanging in the same position as well.
The, this, this one here, the 1.5 by 30, inch and a half, inch and a half by 30.
Well, it says, is that a, that may have put a, it's, it's 1.5 square feet.
And it's, is, is for the lettering at the bottom here?
Yeah, so Sam wanted to kind of create a little bit more, windows are a little plain there, and he had an idea that he wanted to kind of pick up a border around that, and so his, his initial design had much larger Woodstock meats presence, but we had to stay within the six square feet allowed, so we ended up reducing the term Woodstock meats at the bottom of it to comply with that. The rest is just kind of like, I guess, a graphic border. So we just wanted to pitch that to the planning board and see if that was acceptable to you.
Ben Drayson?
Who thought so? The, again, the, the size of the sign is essentially identical to the prime sign, same place, same size, and almost an identical business model, so.
Meats have deli.
Meats, yeah, deli.
Prepared meals?
I, again, I'm, I'm here for signage, and I, I try to like keep, stay in my lane, so to speak, I don't, I don't give people advice on how to run a business, but I will provide graphics that will help promote it. If you have a question?
Are people here?
Yeah, yeah, Keith is here, if you have anything specific, I think now's the time to, to ask and put it on the record, he's very forthright about what's happening there, so he's, he's available for questions.
We have any questions in the boardroom? I'm okay. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the sign for Woodstock meats at 41 East Market Street? Will we make that motion?
I'll second there.
Second, all of the favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We'll put the seat before.
Yeah.
A picture of the sign when it's done, to Ryan?
Of course, absolutely.
Let me relate it to the sign, if you, if the sign's done, thank you. But, but going back to the special use permit, would we need to, like we did before, ask if we have seating, what is the inside looking like, is there a bathroom, et cetera? Would we have asked that for a special permit? If we, if we just accept the, it's, it's like to like, it's same to same, but do we, do we need to understand about seating, for example?
Well, it's a, it's a small store, I don't know.
Is there any, is there none, is it just a counter?
Just a counter, I mean, it's not like.
Just a counter.
Yeah, I, I can answer, I can make it very simple, I still own the business, it's still my lease, it's still my name, it's still my insurance, I've hired them, we're sort of co-branding with their current store, so I hired him to be our manager, he's Sam, the person he mentioned, he also is part-owner and manager of Woodstock, so he's like, let's just use our name and come over here and we're just going to keep doing the same business. So it's my business, my name, he's just going to come run it for me. So nothing's changed, we don't want seats.
Oh, so you're basically going to keep the structure as it is already, the same counters, the same display cases, et cetera?
Yep, yeah, leases and my name, everything, but nothing changes but the, the name of the business.
I'll walk him back.
Yeah, when you open?
Hopefully, well, this was sort of soon, reopen, yeah, we've been close a couple weeks to, to get the rebranding done and all that, so. Sam, well, he's going to be there, so it's not really going to be much different other than kind of piggyback on their brand, and thank you for.
Very good.
The last, I think there's a discussion.
Thank you, sir.
23 South Street, we've got some concepts, we're modifying that, the question is South Street, is it here?
My name's Douglas Hutter, I'm the, I'm not registered here, so I think I'm a designer instead of, but thank you for allowing us to talk to you. This is my first project in Reinbeck, Edwin Beus and the Del Wollin, are the owners of the home, and we, the, the first thing we're trying to do is to build a new stair and, and use the attic for a study. And the existing two little windows in the front, you know, do not meet egress, and I didn't really want to use the skylight for the egress, and so I was hoping to use a casement window that does meet egress, but get one from, you know, have Marvin make one so that it would look like it would have two sashes, but I'm, I'm, you know, not, so that's the way it looks on the inside. Can you go back to that one?
Sure thing, just the last one here?
Yes, so the, the concept for the front window is, is basically to make that a one casement window, but if I can use, but I would use, have two simulated divided light rails vertical so that it can look like two, two wide, three-high sashes. But I'm, I'm just not sure what you look for here, so I really appreciate the opportunity to present and understand what you're looking for. The other sort of question is, my, my sense from hearing it in days, that you prefer wood windows, not clad, all wooden materials, not.
The metal's like, Marvin has metal for the windows, so.
Those are fine?
Those are fine.
Yeah, it has to look like a wood window.
It has to look like one.
And the, the vinyls have to be real on the outside, obviously they don't go all the way through, because you probably have double pane.
Yes.
But it, it can't be the, you know, clip-ons on the inside, it has to be.
Can't be between the glass.
Right, it has to be, look like muttons on the outside.
Okay.
And the.
I, I think we're still going to use wood windows in this case anyways, just because all, we're not really changing many, too many windows, so we'll probably, and, you know, the clouding has the little frame around it, so we'll, we'll probably end up using wood windows anyways, so.
So this is the, sorry to interrupt, so this is what it currently looks like?
That's current.
And this is what you're proposing to gang the windows together?
Yes.
With two, 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 a pair of two, you know, two over three?
Yes, and the, and if I can get Marvin to do, if I can get three glued in the middle, I would do that, because then I could, I could paint the vertical the casing color, and then it really would separate the two sashes, but I'm, I'm not, I haven't dug in with them enough to know whether or not that's an option, but I know I, I did speak to someone that I can do the two, and you know what I'm saying?
Yes, you can go over to my, look at the back of my house, we have two Marvin windows ganged together, and it looks like, it looks like a double gang, but it's actually two separate Marvin windows. And you can't tell from the outside of the house, but it's actually two, two rooms.
Okay, all right, so in any ways, I'm trying to get as close to the existing window as possible, but make it a, you know, an egress window, basically.
The only thing, in the code, it requires that you have vertical proportions on the windows, so the actual panes should be higher than white.
And that's why.
And that's what it looks like.
That's what I'm trying to do with this, and I'm, you know, trying to match what's there for that, but there are two more sashes, so.
Okay.
You're, I agree with you. The other aspect of this is that the attic feels very large and usable, but it doesn't meet headroom if you, actually, if you can go to.
Yeah, you need to show the dormers.
Yeah, you can either, you can, yeah, you can, so there's a, it's, keep going, it should be an excellent, hopefully, there you go. So this one, the, the, the dormer, the longer, wider dormer, is really for headroom along the stair. The stair is going to be in the center, more or less in the center of the, of the attic, and so it has the seven-foot headroom, has probably eight-foot headroom. This portion, like maybe a foot of it is seven foot, and then it drops down to five foot. So the, this, this is a way that I can basically get headroom along the stair, so then I can get to the center of the rear gable, and then to make that room a habitable space, I would need to add a dormer so I can get seven-foot height and seven-foot height. And so what I really wanted to do was kind of get your take on this, because if we do want to do this, and we're considering the other work we're doing, I really want to make structural, I want to, I don't want to, I want to do what I need to do structurally so that I can bring the loads down without having to do impressions at the door and at the day-to-day, and so I just kind of wanted to get your, your impressions on, on what you thought, and if you saw the earlier one, the earlier one, we had a large gable similar to the front of the house, but we, we talked and we kind of felt that that was a little too much.
I personally don't mind dormers, as long as they're consistent with the building. It's pretty typical for people to add dormers. I prefer them to skylights, to tell you the truth, because the skylights always look like a modern elevator, there's no historic skylights.
Yeah.
But it's very typical for dormers to be added, you know, we just added one on 14 South Street that has a new dormer in it. So as long as it's done well, as I, it looks like you're doing, I, I wouldn't have problems with the two small dormers that you're adding.
So you use the, the back room only, and that's the back room, or?
So the, if you, if you don't mind going to the, so the, so that's the, this is phase one, A13, so in this one, you come up the stair and you go straight into the new, the study, and then the window that we're talking about is that window in front. And so that's, we're all set, we don't need any dormers for the first phase, but if we want to get to the back room, the storage, back storage, I don't have enough headroom to have a three-foot corridor on the top side of the stair to get to that doorway, so that's why I need the long, the long dormer. And then to make the store, what's called the storage room in this drawing, to make that a habitable space, I need to add a dormer back there.
Could either go to a pet room?
No, the, not, well, I, the windows would be, they would meet egress, the, the back dormers, those would, would meet egress, but the intention is more maybe more as a playroom.
You mentioned fire sprinklers in today's submission, so would you still need to meet egress even with the addition of fire sprinklers?
My understanding is that you do, that you still have to have, my conversation with one of the inspectors was that you still have to do.
Past iron fire escape plug all the way down, or a sprinkler system?
Yeah.
So sprinklers is something more desirable.
Oh, so instead of the sprinklers, you can have a second means of egress, is that what you're saying?
People put these like iron or, you know, three-story high, to go up to third floor, you have to have a, a way to get out, because it's so high.
Okay.
We read it just on a, the bed and breakfast on the South Street on the corner, had a follow with that, as well as the windows have to be a certain size of egress. That, that bed and breakfast has very nice ancient, you know, scalable windows like that, that people couldn't get through, so that, they had to go through the sprinkler system because they couldn't even get the egress, but you have to check with the building inspector and.
So my assumption from, I have to talk to the building inspector, so my assumption, and I talked to sprinkler company, my assumption is that we already sprinkled the attic, but that I still need to have egress windows?
I have another question, what do you need to egress?
I need to check with building, the zoning board, the stuff, building, yeah, I get some actual code, and we're not experts in it.
Oh, yeah, no.
Your internals, we're mostly external part landscaping.
And I prefer to have an egress window anyways, and even with the sprinkler, but, yeah.
You have to have those ladders that drop down, you can throw out the window.
So, so phase one, we get an egress window, the front of the house being renovated to usable space on the third floor, and two skylights?
Yes.
And then phase two, potentially, we get two dormers?
Two dormers.
And you get more usable space towards the rear of the house?
Yes.
Right, that's, that's a phase two item, but structurally, in phase one, you're going to fortify the walls to allow the dormers to exist.
I'm going to need a couple ridge beams, so I need to either put some extra joints in the floor to carry those loads, and I want to do all of that now, basically.
And you have it the third floor, you can make it to usable space, you should, yeah.
Yeah, it's a beautiful space, and the, but it, it's, it was kind of funny when you, it feels a lot bigger than it is when you start trying to allow for, like the, the gable that's on the, well, it's this side, it's, which is which? The west.
The west.
The west side, the bottom of the ridge is six foot eight, so there, none of it is, is habitable.
Is there a scenario in phase one where we don't get the skylights and there's some rethinking of the dormers to bring the same amount of light in and not accomplish that with skylights?
I think in the study, I mean, I think. I think in the study, I mean, I think in the study, I, I, for both cost and, and also just for the, it's okay, I'd rather have the two skylights under commonness, um, in the standing.
I'm just struggling because it's to the same, same issue, because it's a fairly visible elevation. As you can, south on South Street, right, the, the house sticks fairly far out.
Yeah.
The neighbor's house is quite small, sits back a little bit away.
Yep, exactly.
Um, so, you know, there's some beautiful landscaping that covers a lot of four-story, but the roof is fairly visible, and that's on south on South Street in the historic district. So two skylights or, yeah, I guess you do that, seems just a little out of...
You, uh, put them on the other side of the house?
That was our western, I mentioned, I could, I could put on the...
The house next door is close.
I could put them on the western side. Normally, I would be worried about the western sun coming in and making it a little too hot, but we can get them with shades, and I, there are also a lot of trees on that side.
Yeah, I think that...
And so if you do it that way, I, I would definitely move to the other side.
And I think the fire burners did a very good job of putting a lot of things on the west side, you know, the, the air conditioning units and other things back there that...
Yes.
Really don't exist from, from the street. I don't think the neighbors are terribly impacted by them either, so that doesn't, that's a good solution.
Now, the other, the...
Find a split system, please.
I, I, that was a good heads up. Um, I, yeah, those are, it was a last resort for me. Um, the, um, the other elevation, though, that, um, would be part of phase one, is the, the driveway side. Um, we're also, um, one, so that's the existing elevation, and what we're, we're gonna really move the main, uh, access, um, you know, into the house, the mudroom and everything, to the side of the house. And so we, I was gonna replicate the, the front porch, um, with a little side porch.
Yeah.
And then I've also kind of realigned the windows, um, and adjusted the windows to make them more symmetrical. So we're really trying to, um, none of us are too excited about that side of the house, that's currently standing.
So greenery could, in terms of the sightline from the street, from what it currently is?
But also, if you remember, there's, there's a strange recess at the very rear of the house there. If, if you see in that elevation, there's like that door, it's kind of...
The door's on an angle?
Yes.
And then it drops back about three and a half feet?
I think it was for ADA compliance, maybe, um, but...
That might be the best, I might not have a better picture than this one, but...
Uh, but...
Oh, I guess...
Yeah, there it is. You can see how there's a setback in the middle of the rear first floor, and so this, this, our plan would remove that, the, the house would fill out to the, to be straight.
And this little alcove would be removed?
Yes.
Right, it would become interior space.
I think it might be, might be good to maintain a certain amount of setback there, so it's not one big wall, you know, that it's at least, uh, whether it's a setback, I don't know if that's within your plan or whatever, or some way of separating, so that it's not one big sort of broad wall.
In our plan, we create a little roof, a little porch-like thing.
Yeah.
We were hoping to improve the location, so it's, it's sort of unfortunate for our neighbor. Do you think maybe the, the little porch over that door?
Yeah, the porch will separate, and we're gonna drop down the gable line.
Right, exactly, and then we, we don't show here, it's to create, um, constructed for the trash bins that would be under those kitchen windows, and then, um, greenery, just to make the side of the house more attractive and keeping with the others, the rest of the house, which is like this size, so it just wasn't...
So there'll still be a little bit of a, a setback here.
Yeah, but it's only about three...
Your eye will be taken away from that by being drawn to this feature here.
I think, I think everything except maybe moving the skylights is okay, looks good.
To move the skylights to the other side?
Yeah, if you can.
Everything suggested, and that would be...
Just to add, just to add one note about the, the visual from the east there, that we are also hoping to add a fence along the property line in the rear part of the house, so that it would begin around where the, um, the new porch is, the new entrance, and move back from there, so it would be screened off, you know, from the street and from the neighbor's eye view. Um, sort of some living space in the backyard would have a, a privacy screen, and also improve that unbroken wall look, I think.
Yeah.
I heard you talking about fences, do fences come here?
Yes, part of site, yeah.
Okay.
And then the bed section in the code would about height?
When you break the front plate of the house, you can go eight feet in front of that. Six. You know, you try to go four feet or less, we, and we don't encourage fences at all in the front yard. We like, some people will put up fences, but, you know, it's nice to keep village harmony. But once you break the front plate of the house, you can go to eight feet or whatever's happening around.
We only go to six.
Or six feet, so...
And six feet, six feet tall?
Six feet.
Yes.
And is there a preferred, um, appearance of events?
Wood.
Wood.
Not plastic, or, you know, metal.
Okay.
And then, yes, or, not metal. Chain link or any of that sort of stuff.
Right.
So then regarding the exterior, the, the clamber would remain?
Yes.
And these, uh, shingles?
Those all stay. In fact, in my, I was re, I was redoing, I was using those in my dormers.
And all of the, I mean, there's some very nice details on this house, all of the detail...
Yeah.
Here would remain, even, even within the eaves.
Yes, we're not touching any of, any of that.
Well, that's a character of the house. We would, wouldn't, we'd actually like to repaint the exterior, but, but these won't cover it.
I do wanna talk to Evan and Dell about gutters, though, because it's not really the right gutter for that porch.
The, um, the new side porch would mimic the detail on the front porch?
Right. Right. It is, now.
We, we don't regulate paint colors, not in our color.
Well, there is a provision against fluorescent...
We don't want, you know, there, they go green or something, you know, like...
One, after a light green house, we put a thing in the code that you can't have fluorescent or neon or...
Right.
Stripes.
Another element would be repairing the front porch. Now, if you can see, there's a, in the existing house, there's a front porch, and then the porch continues along the west side of the house. Um, I guess your overhead would be your only way. Um, and, and that part along the west side is, is synthetic.
Trex, it's acceptable.
And as far as the front porch, is trex acceptable, or?
Or...
Sounds like this has come up before.
Oh, gee. Yeah. So the front porch is currently wood, it's a little worn, but the, uh, the previous owner was in a wheelchair. Pre, I think it was previous or previous year?
Yeah.
And so they continued the deck, but they built the driveway side deck and the other deck, um, out of trex. And so we were sort of, from a maintenance standpoint, you were, um, we wanted to ask you what, what you're looking for, what's acceptable. So the railings will all be wood, they'll continue to be wood, but although they're, all, all the wood is a rotting, yeah.
And it's a performance concern, the wood, right?
Yeah, I mean, it, so we bought the house in 2016, and it feels like the deterioration was much faster than I thought. It, it, it looked a lot better the day we bought it, uh, just from weather and, and footwear. Uh, so, you know, I guess we can replace it with wood, but I just, you know, I, I don't have a lot of experience.
We've never talked about, I mean, we bought wood railings and wood, you know, everything, but the deck surface itself, I don't...
I think it came up when, um, Bill Clark came on one of his houses, and he said he has to replace the porch every six years or something, because the, the new wood just rots. And he wanted, and I think we allowed him to use...
Yeah, I don't think we, we, it's, with all the railings and, you know, all the, it's not just, it should be wood, um, but I don't...
In the code, it just talks about siding materials. Um, siding, she trims shutters, lumines, doesn't say anything about flooring.
Well, I, I wondered, because the west deck does have the trex, but it...
You can't see the, the, the deck itself, but we took all the trim, tiles and everything, that's why we, we prefer wood deck. That doesn't have as much damage as the actual flat surface of the deck. And it tends to go quicker.
I can tell you that just, there are, there are options out there that are somewhere between the two.
Okay.
So, you know, it sounds like we don't have a whole lot to say or precedent on it, but from a personal standpoint, I, I view trex very much as a, a deck material, right? Just the way the floors are, are shaped, um, and the width they come in. They tend to suggest more of a, of what you envision as a deck than a porch. But there are other alternatives to, you know, the duffel, the original standby material, which now just is of inferior quality, the, the type of thing that would rot out every six years or so. The next level up would certainly be something along the lines of omahogany or something more, a higher price point. Um, but there are various forms of other alternatives made specifically for porches, especially in coastal environments. So there's, there's some other materials that are just hybrids, you know, whether they have fly ash or something like that, but they are, they're milled very much to be put together like porch boards. Um, there are even some metal alternatives with a skin of wood on them or a skin of synthetic on them, um, that are very, very durable, and the price ends up somewhere between the duffel and, and omahogany for those materials.
Yeah.
And just in terms of general look, and even just living on a porch the way you live on a porch as opposed to a deck, without any of the grooves or the spaces in the floors.
Exactly, that's a good...
You might be happier in the long run.
You know, puffings, nails popping, splinters, you know, it's, it's, it's better to have anybody, as I said, you can't see it because you're, you know, on the street, just looking at the details, but not to your own self. But I don't think there's a problem.
So the, the current, the current house is, uh, four bedrooms?
Well, it's, so the, the second floor rear, um, where it says family room and bedroom, was a separate unit, um, previously. So there, that stair goes to the, the deck on the top, down to, to the door of the deck on the top, and there are three bedrooms in the front, and then there's one bedroom on the first floor. So, um, so there are five bedrooms. And we, we're really gonna have two, we're gonna have two studies and three bedrooms.
And this is village sewer or a septic?
Septic.
Septic.
Village sewer.
So you, you don't all...
Aren't you village sewer? You have a septic, do you, you have a septic in your yard?
What I was told is, I don't know if you, it, it's just a leach field, but I don't, like, I actually don't know what it is. I, I, when we had someone come out when we bought the house and said, uh, what's the term for like a stone cistern or something?
Cesspool?
Cesspool, yes. And that's what most places have, that's what most places have.
Okay, absolutely.
That makes sense, because I don't think the yard's big enough for a...
That's pretty... So you say, you say the plan ultimately will take the house from five bedrooms to three bedrooms?
Well, it'll be two studies that, um, well, one won't have a closet, one will.
So it's kind of, it's a little complicated now, because when we moved into the house, I was built, was called a master, built as a master bedroom on the first floor. We removed the closet from it to make that bedroom space, so now even though it's a large, that's not...
But that one, we're gonna add a closet back to?
Right, so it's right now, there's a room that's technically, we will not have bedroom because it doesn't have a closet. There's, there's, there's some of confusing dispositions like that, but what we're doing is taking the guest apartment and integrating it into the house, because we don't use it, it's a separate apartment.
That's, that's this existing one?
Yes, that right now is a separate guest apartment, and that will become a bedroom.
Uh-huh, and this is the one that doesn't have, oh, it does have a closet.
Oh, that, it...
Yes.
That does have a closet, now that is to put in the, this one's room.
So, so we're gonna have four bedrooms and a study in the attic that doesn't have a closet?
Where's that increase in the number of bedrooms that doesn't affect the septic system, which is a really a cesspool? And the villagers pull cesspools, the villagers are so tight that, uh, that's why village water was planned, because if you got a village water, you don't have to worry about it, because in a lot of these small lots, you'd have to go like three people's backyards to put in a proper leach field, and so people just, they did the cisterns, they did cesspools, they did the stuff, because the building is very small, that's why it's really, and it perks really well, and perks well.
And does a cesspool have to be pumped out?
No, I can't, no.
No, that's not...
Sometimes, well...
Each time, each time, it has to be.
When it does, you might want to think about it.
Is this part, it's a very, helps me, if it's like...
Well, if you only have, if you only have a cesspool, that would have to be pumped through some regular, if you have no leach field attached to it, right? In fact, we have, we have both, we have, we have a tank, in fact, we have a pump system, we have two tanks, because of the slope, but once in a while, you know, the solids come in, and then let's go to the next tank, and they go into the leach field, and every several years, we have to have the primary tank pumped.
I have a old house on a, on a large lot, which is a typical...
I have a old house on a tiny lot, and I have three that I found on the property. And when I recovered them, they were empty, I mean, they were, you know, weren't built up, never. I've been there twenty-six years and I haven't pumped them.
So, so you've never had to pump your...
You know, when my, when the septic guy came in 2016, he, he said, drive them out. He said, you have, someday, you'll, you might have to empty it, but seems nothing had happened.
And so my two, my next two neighbors in a row said that when they had, uh, when they had their look deck, they opened it up and it dried.
Yeah, it was amazing, mine looked like the, you know, like it was just built.
Uh-huh, pretty efficient, digesting waste, so, because they get the solids and all that, and they, they can do a really good job, until, until they stop doing a really good job.
I could regret what happened to me.
And then we don't talk about it.
So look at the first light snow, and you'll be able to find that way or something, because it's, because they'll melt that, and you'll see that.
So, I just had a question about the, the elevation looked like the job was gone off the back where the little house over is, but it looks like the proposed plan does show it still, is that, I just wanted to be clear. Uh, I think we said that the...
You may have printed it before this morning.
Oh, and this is, yeah, this is yesterday or last Friday, okay, so, so it is gone. And then it looks like the stairs would just encroach into the setback.
And I believe that's okay, right? The structure itself has to be beyond, but the steps can, can go into the setback?
Yes.
Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, it can encroach, help to serve the feed, I don't know, I'm just thinking. You might, yeah, this is just a suggestion, you're putting in the fence, you set up the, when you side porches. You might want to extend it up to the front building line, so you sort of shield the view of the parked car. Just thinking about it.
Is there, I didn't follow quite, like, isn't there a limit of how close it can come to the street at, at six feet?
Yes, to the front plate of the building.
Oh, I see.
So you park between that, you know, beyond the porch. So you could screen the cars, if you have enough room, you get in and out of the car and all that sort of stuff. Extend the fence up to the front plate.
And leave the gate to the back where it is, and just bring the side fence up here, so...
Yeah.
But the setback from the property line, it could become an issue in terms of the car door opening?
Yeah, well, I, and I just thought, I don't have a measure, I can't read that.
The setback for fences?
We need to mark, we actually need to mark. I think our intention is to try and plant this up a little bit more, too.
All right, well, we'll build lighting screen then, too.
Yeah.
But it's twelve feet, which would be enough to open your car doors, if you put it on the property line. But anyway, that's something to think about. We always like to screen the automobiles if we can, have them front, park is back, as far as we can out of the front yard.
So you need to like refi, refine the plans, and then call, fill out the application, and then you can come back, when you're ready, we're beginning, I know, first, and then remember, everybody's working, pushing two weeks later. Um, and, you know, we could, uh, look at... And, you know, you can look at this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So steps can encroach up to three feet on the side?
Thank you.
Oh, just for clarity, so the side porch working all this lower level, is that a phase one or is that a phase two?
That's a phase one.
That's phase one, the fence, the covered porch.
Well, we're gonna go meet with, now that we kind of have a, you know, we feel good about what we're proposing, we're gonna meet with contractors, and then they will determine how much goes in the phase one.
You're gonna draw something, I would draw a phase one and not confuse, you know, anything to say. This is what we want to do now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, you gave me enough for the future one. The only thing I'll, again, the only thing I'll do will be in my permits, that will be whatever structural needs to go in.
Just gonna open up walls, you can think of, you know, running the pipes up, split system inside, you know, without, inside of the building, you know.
We currently have four air handlers getting cooling this house. Two that are doing the first floor because they're separate units, and then there are two doing the upstairs as well. So we're gonna see if we can get down to two.
Great, good. If the walls are open, you could do a lot of great stuff.
Yes. Well, thank you so much for your time. This was a wonderful opportunity. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming beforehand, and now, yes.
Well, thank Ryan, he's the one who let me know.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Anybody have, any other comments? We have to think about the next time, will that be the first, you know, by the way, we're not meeting on election day. First time I've been on the planning board and I'm not meeting on election, because the world is first, is the first Tuesday, but not good enough for the government, so election day is on the egg, and we're not meeting on, that's never happened before. It'll always be rush out to village, oh, I know what happened, downstairs, I went to town, or who's the president? But we're not meeting on election day, but then December, the second meeting in December usually falls very close to Christmas.
Yes.
We have to decide like that.
We have to decide. But if we could back up to November chair, now that you brought that up about election day, and we have a request from the village clerk, mayor, and trustee board that because November eighth is election day, that would technically be their meeting day...
Right.
For November. They requested if we can give up our meeting on November fifteenth and move it to the twenty-second or not have a second meeting at all in November.
But then, what are the meetings for December?
December won't be until December sixth. There would be about two weeks.
And the second meeting would be...
It's one day.
Twenty, twenty-two.
That's too close. People will start leaving by then. So we get a one meeting in December, but then not, if it's right up, I'd like to adjust our whole schedule and try to spread it out.
But that's, I mean, we don't have to make the final decision tonight. We can revisit this on November first?
So November first, and then we meet three weeks later.
On the twenty-second.
Probably meet three weeks later, not December first, but because it wouldn't be meeting the second time. So we have three weeks and three weeks. We meet the second week. That would conflict with the mayor again, because now it's live. When we're on Zoom, we're not in the way, now we'd be in the way, so can we...
Now, is everybody comfortable with November twenty-second? That's three days before Thanksgiving. I'm going. Okay, so John would be in now. Does anyone else know? Jeff, which, are you gonna be in Florida?
Not me, no.
So is December one, two weeks later?
Uh, no, December sixth.
December sixth, okay.
Is two weeks later.
And then we'd meet January...
Uh, January third. It's a whole month.
We only have one meeting in December on the sixth.
Yeah, so, a whole month. And that's Christmas and New Year's. That would be a lot of activity.
Yeah.
It'll be okay, then.
Yeah, it'll end up being okay.
So it'll be the first, the twenty-second, and December sixth, and then January, whatever, twice.
Okay.
Okay.
So do we wanna make that...
Make sure you have more, because I'm gonna be going on the twenty-second.
Do we wanna make that official tonight? Make that schedule change official tonight?
We hear all those things. I'm not talking anywhere.
What happened to December twentieth? I missed my opportunity.
It's too so close to people on holiday.
So we jumped to it.
If we have to have a plan, we don't like when a holiday or something, but have a public hearing, like people are... I tried to have a public hearing, but I don't see the way nobody around. It's not, you know, to get caught there. That sound good? Do you make a motion for that, or is it...
Because we have to, we'll eventually have to announce it for the schedule change.
So is it a motion? Our meeting schedule for the rest of the year would be November first, November twenty-second, and December sixth. I'll make the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Close in favor?
Aye, thank you. The village clerk and the mayor will be very...
They're happy. Try to keep up with what's happening. So December one, November one, November twenty-two, and December sixth, and then January thirty, okay. Any other comments?
Any minutes, drafts? We're falling behind here.
Does this make it easier for you now? You were here, so...
I wouldn't say that much, but it was definitely nice to be in person.
I hear you could look at Jeff's video.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you didn't recall something, I'll get it, can write it, whatever, you can... So it's good to have you, because you can ask questions, and I keep asking if you get over that, any questions, and that, so it's good that you're here. Thank you for talking.
Is there, just a question, is there... Are we in violation of the state law? Do we have to have the draft minutes within two weeks of the meeting, not the final? If we go up to the website, there's frankly not much there. The other reason I, the other reason I asked this is that, take a bunch of notes. If we, if we had the draft within two weeks, I'd remember more. And looking at the draft and remembering and looking at the notes, wouldn't have to go through the whole entire video every time.
So from my recollection, we are up till August on the website. Because remember, we only met once in July and August, and then we met twice in September. And then we only met once, this is our only meeting in October. Let's just try to catch up on the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Be good if, November first, we had some minutes to work on, if we catch up, okay? Take that a priority, so we can...
I can add, an applicant, it's really helpful with minutes, and you can quote them and read what you're contributing to. A frequent applicant, the one who works, that makes good to see.
Hey, do I have a motion to a chair?
Motion to a chair, Jeff.
I'll second, David. All of us in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.